Good morning. Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. I am Chair, Commissioner Krista Yocum. To my right is Commissioner Roma Amundson, and to my left is Commissioner Matt Schulte. Please rise and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, Mr. Clerk, you may start the meeting.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Reading options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. First item we have is minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 30, 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Item two, the claims, the approval of the claims process through June 6, 2023, and I'll note we have an amendment for the payroll.
I make a motion to approve the claims through June 6 to include the payroll through June 8, or through, I'm sorry. The payroll's through May 31.
The payout date is, yeah.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Two B, approval of a claim to the Indian Center in the amount of $8,107.43.
Sorry, I'm here for consent items. Go ahead. I didn't realize there were a few more claims to get through. Sorry about that.
I'll move approval of two B.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claim to the Indian Center. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
I'll abstain as my husband serves on the board.
Two yays, one abstention?
Did, sorry, Mr. Clerk, did you go through two C?
We have not.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I walked up here a bit early. That was my fault.
You distracted us by doing that. We're good. We can move on to item two C.
Item two C, claims including bills and good, billing for goods and services beyond the 90-day timeframe, reprimanded in Nebraska revised statute, Chapter 23-135. One, City of Lincoln Information Services dated May 24, 2023, for a total of $59,843.01, and City of Lincoln Personnel Human Resources dated May 24, 2023, for a total of $67.50.
I'll move approval of two C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero.
Good morning, John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I would just request that consent item three C1 be held. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual member, any individual item may be removed for special discussion by consideration of a commissioner by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of, A, amendments to the following county contracts. One, C-22-0928 with HD Supply Facilities Maintenance Limited, HDS, for janitorial supplies, equipment. Two, C-23-0204 with Site One Landscape Supply for the annual supply of turf fertilizer and chemicals. Three, C-23-0295 with Aramark Correctional Services LLC for food service to the county's correctional facilities. Four, C-21-0714 with JEO Consulting Group for on-call structural consultation services related to bridges in Lancaster County. Five, C-21-0717 with Felsberg-Holt and Olvig for on-call structural consultation services related to bridges in Lancaster County. B, right-of-way contracts with the following. One, Matthew Murray Trust, South 120th Street and Pioneer's Boulevard in the amount of $4,275. Two, Matthew Murray Trust, South 120th Street, Old Cheney Road to Pioneer's Boulevard in the amount of $19,960. Three, Andrew and Rochelle S.A., North 98th Street, Holden Street to Adams Street, in the amounts of $935.40. Four, Warren L. and Kathy A. Ryder, North 98th Street, Holden Street to Adams Street, in the amounts of $1,435.40. Change orders to the following county contracts, skipping over C1. C2 is C-23-0048 with Constructors Incorporated, and C-23-0044 with Votscapes Incorporated. D, utility permit number 2380 allowing Lincoln Traffic Utility, L T U, to install a new sewer line in the north side of Van Doren Street at the intersection of South 98th Street and Van Doren Street. Agreement for speaking services at the 2023 Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference with the following. One, Richard Mendel in the amount not to exceed $500. Two, Amber Ruffin in the amount not to exceed $650. Three, Lacy Lamar in the amount not to exceed $650. F, grant contracts with the Salvation Army for the following. One, the Teen Night Program in the amount of $9,000. Two, the Shield Program in the amount of $10,000. And G, received and placed and filed the following. Clerk of the District Court, Assessor Register of Deeds, and County Clerk.
Move approval of the consent items with the exception of C1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I was just gonna make one little comment. First of all, I appreciate the continued reports from the departments. I noticed there's more marriage licenses going on. It turns out it's a good, good time of the year to get married.
Those June weddings, maybe.
Yeah.
Please.
Did we want to do item C1, or should I move on to?
Yes. Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't extremely clear. I asked that it be held, and I should have been more specific to ask that it be removed from consent agenda and discussed separately. So I would ask for a motion at this time to take items, consent item C1 for, for discussion and take it up at this time.
Well, I would so move.
Second.
This is item C1, the change orders for the following county contracts, C-23-0089 with Bauer Underground Incorporated.
Good morning, Commissioners. The item before you is basically an extension of our contract period for the first quadrant of our broadband system. In reality, what should have happened was we should have started the contract date from the permit issue date. But unfortunately, that's not what happened. So we actually had a date that started a couple of weeks before we actually started construction.
Right, right. I know we had some administrative and in-house things we were doing at that time that delayed it. Thank you.
I guess I have a question. It just delayed it a couple of weeks, but this is a 76-day extension. Like, that's two and a half months, right?
And that brings me to why I'm here. Candace Behrens from the County Attorney's Office. The item was removed from the consent agenda because there has been a change in the dates on the change order. The original, the original contract times section of the change order that's linked to the agenda has different dates than what the, what the contract is. So the contract substantial completion date is actually May 12, 2023, and final completion date is June 9, 2023. It doesn't address your question.
You're talking about, that was the original dates?
The original dates are what's linked to the agenda. The corrected dates are final completion of June 9, 2023 for this quadrant. So that was the reason it's pulled off of the consent agenda, because there would have to be an update to those dates. So if I may approach, then.
And have those to read and, to read the change. And so then we can approve it with this correction.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we're not changing what the con, what the revised contract would say. The revised contract still has August completion dates, correct?
Right. The, the end result of today's approval of a change order would be the same date.
Okay. I guess my, my concern continues to be where we started a couple of weeks late, now we're having a two and a half month pushback on the final, right? And that's still correct, right? The original contract started a couple of weeks late, but now we're saying the due date's two and a half months later, right?
So, okay. Yeah, well, I, all I know is that the original change order that's linked to the agenda said that the final completion date was like May 23, 2023. It's actually June 9, 2023. But then the request date for the new completion date is still that August date.
Okay.
Yeah, so that hasn't changed.
Right.
So do we have a motion then to approve this change order with the final completion date of June 9?
I think we do have one.
I would move approval.
So you're.
I'll second that. I just hope this doesn't, I mean, pushing back the date this far is threatens, threat, I mean, it's, it's not a good look for the, for the contractor or for us to be pushing the date back. We need to, we need to hold the contractor to the dates that we can and, and get this project done.
There are multiple milestones baked within that extension period. So that extension doesn't necessarily indicate that we're running over on construction timeline.
Right.
But that's the time that's included for not only construction, but also cleaning up the right-of-way, which we have county standards for that we have to follow, and any other contractual items. We also have a huge data collection component here that we have to make sure we have the locates in the system for the first time. So there are multiple pieces baked into that.
Well, I really don't know if we have any other alternative. We have to go forward.
Right.
Essentially, we, we need to move.
It does extend the construction time, though. This is extending the construction time. You're saying it's not, but it does extend the construction time, correct?
I don't.
Because it's pushing the end date back two and a half months. The original date only moved back a few weeks. So it's extending the construction. That's all I'm saying, is that we need, yeah, it's extending the construction time.
So I think we can, we could probably research that and give you a bit more detail to that.
Okay.
But, yeah.
But on this motion for this change order, are we ready to vote then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, three oh. New business, item four A, special event permit application from Susan Cronin, Grounded Nebraska, for the LLC Grounded Nebraska Gravel Cycling Races and 5K Run, excuse me, on June 24, 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning. John Berry, Lancaster County Engineering. Grounded Nebraska is a, is a new organization for us. We haven't really dealt with them before. I know they have been around for a while. They have races in other counties, and I haven't had a lot of complaints about that.
Are you here to speak on this?
Okay.
Oh, no, this would be great. We'd love to hear from you. We're always excited when there are new events, but of course, we always have to.
I have a lot of emails have gone on between Susan and I, getting routes, getting the routes organized and changed, do it all out of our culvert projects that we have going on. And actually, we had a little bit of a change actually on Thursday or Friday. You'll see on there, on, on the 125-mile route, there was a potential of two culverts being, being in the way. We found out Friday that that project actually is going to start after their event. So right, as of right now, that shouldn't be an issue. You know, she's aware that, you know, make, make sure you look at our maps, because we always have emergency culverts, our road closures that come up.
Right.
And there's even a recommend, recommendation in here to, you know, to drive it a couple of days ahead of time, make sure everything's good.
Especially with the sporadic rain that we've had.
I, I was just in Kansas over the weekend at another event that the rain made a huge impact, muddy roads. So I don't want to do that to our participants.
Well, we're excited to have the new project here, or the new event here, and so I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero.
Thank you for being mindful of all the, the things that we have to consider here in the county. Good luck with the event.
Thank you.
Four B, a special designated license application from Farmside Weddings and Events LLC for an event at Roca Berry Farms on June 24, 2023.
John Berry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is basically their after-event celebration to be held at Roca Berry Farm.
Do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so we have the liquor license there. It's actually one of our wedding venues that's applying for the SDL, and so we did this event last year, and, yeah, we look forward to it again. Any questions?
Would move approval. I think it's great.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Four C, an agreement with Concordia University, Nebraska, to establish an internship program through the Human Services.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. We are excited for this new partnership with Concordia. We've had interns before from the university, but we had a student reach out to us who's interested in criminal justice, who wants to do an internship with our office. So we're just excited for this new partnership. Thank you.
Nice to expand those internships.
Would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Four D, agreement with NRG Media LLC for podcast hosting for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. There's no cost to the county.
Good morning, Captain John Vick, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. As most of you know, in March, we started a podcast with the Sheriff's Office to cover all things public safety related to our office and throughout Lancaster County. We've had a partnership, an ongoing relationship with Broadcast House Media, and they recently started a platform, a website called Podcast House, which is kind of a play off of Broadcast House, where they're featuring some local podcast content. Jack Mitchell, Girl Lincoln, some others from the Lincoln area, and they approached the Sheriff's Office and asked if we would like to also have our podcast featured as part of the Lincoln Lancaster County area podcasts on that site. So this is an agreement, no cost involved, but, but simply to allow us to be on their site.
Great, might reach a broader audience that way.
We hope so.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. Would move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Four E, agreement with Lancaster Rural Water District Number One for relocation of underground utility facilities necessitated by the county's construction work on Van Doren Street. The estimated cost to the county is $30,788.45.
Morning. Larry Legg with Lancaster County Engineering Department. This is simply a utility relocation agreement with Rural Water. They generally have, it's outside of our existing right-of-way, so when we purchase new right-of-way to replace the culvert, the relocation is eligible for reimbursement. It's non-betterment, it just moves it out of our way, so we don't have any conflict. This is on Van Doren Street between 162nd and 176th.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Four F, license agreement with BNSF Railway Company, allowing the county to construct, maintain, and use fiber optic line across or along BNSF rail corridor. The cost of the county for each license is $956, and these are at 123W-16889 in Firth, line segment 3,000, mile post 187.32, 223W-16890 in Firth, line segment 3,000, mile post 189.43, and 323-16891 in Bennett, line segment 0141, mile post 45.81.
I would move approval of these, and I would like to point out that the funds for this are being taken care of by the American Rescue Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Four G, work experience, worksite agreement with the Greater Lincoln Workforce Development Board for the temporary placement of American Job Center participants in several county agencies.
Kristy Bauer, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. This agreement is for our summer interns from American Job Center. We were able to place eight youth with eight county agencies. We had 11 interested agencies, but unfortunately, there were three that didn't receive youth. We're hoping next year, when we get an earlier start on this program, that we'll be able to secure interns for all our interested departments.
This is exciting and an opportunity for young people to learn more about county government.
Absolutely.
This is great.
Would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Four H, grant contracts with the Youth for Christ Lincoln Area for the following. The Parent Life Program in the amount of $10,000, and the Campus Life Program in the amount of $2,500.
These are valuable programs, and I would move approval.
I will, I, I will second the motion so that we can move forward with conversation.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle again, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. And these two contracts went through our normal approval process in that before we even got it to committee or released the RFP, it already has come before the board once, and you've approved that funding to allocate out. And then it went through our normal JBC process, our Joint Budget Committee process. They made the recommendations, and then the contracts are just kind of a formality to approve.
I'd just make a comment, just out of abundance of caution, I'm going to declare a potential conflict of interest with these contracts. I work at the beneficiary organization, but I have no personal gain from the money coming in. The beneficiaries really are the pregnant and parenting teens, as well as the youth who attend an at-risk school. So I will abstain from this vote.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, two with an abstention. And then four I, recommendations from the Joint Budget Committee for the 2022-2023 childcare assistance funding.
Would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Did you have a comment, Sarah?
Sarah Hoyle again, and I was just going to say, much to item number H, this went through the similar process where we already brought it in front of the board for the approval. This is the formality now. It's gone before the JBC, and now it's coming to you. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Four J, recommendations from the Joint Budget Committee, JBC, for the 2023-2024 funding.
With this one, yeah, okay.
We can hear from Sarah first, okay?
Sarah Hoyle, and this, again, is another formality one. You've already approved the 50% increase. Again, the county allows for a 3% increase to all the agencies currently funded through JBC, as does the city, so this is matching what the city does on their side.
I would recommend, I would move that we approve the Joint Budget Committee for this one with the exception of El Centro.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Joint Budget Committee removing El Centro from this vote. El Centro de las Americas. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Three zero.
Yeah, a motion too.
All right. I would now move approval of the funding, the JBC 2023-2024 funding.
For El Centro specifically?
Yeah.
Second.
For El Centro, yeah.
A new second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
And I will abstain as I serve on the board.
Two zero. That brings us to item five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone wishing to speak can come forward, and you'll have five minutes. And please, please state your name and sign in.
Thank you. My name is Kenneth Anderson. And this has to do with last week's closed session. And the reason that you gave was possible litigation. Now, if you notice the wording in the rules as published on nebraska.gov, legitimate rules would be pending litigation and imminent litigation. The reason that you gave last week was possible litigation. Could I have a clarification? Did you actually mean imminent litigation last week when you said that? Because if not, if you stated that correctly, then I do have something to say. Otherwise, I don't.
Sir, I would point out at this point, the public comment is, just remember, it's not public speech, but the commissioners do not clearly respond to that, so it's not bad.
I get it. I get it.
Thank you for that clarification.
I will go on the basis that that was correct, what you stated last week, that it was possible litigation. And as such, I'd like to go on the record as asserting that that was illegal closed session last week. There's a huge difference between possible litigation and imminent litigation, which is legitimate, and pending legit, litigation, which is legitimate also. Possible litigation is way too broad, and, and when they set that rule up, I'm sure they had the opportunity to put in the word possible, and it just wasn't appropriate. And so if I could just go on the record as asserting that that was an illegal closed session that you called last week. Appreciate it.
Time begins when?
When you start talking.
Good morning, public servants. The last time we met, I made a reference to the pandemic being a plandemic. You seem completely lost on the idea, so today I'm going to enlighten you. Before I do, though, I'm going to remind you once again that our Nebraska State Constitution, the supreme law of Nebraska, says that we, the people, are by nature free and independent, and have certain inherent and inalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and the right to keep and bear arms, and such rights shall not be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision. arms, and such rights shall not be denied or infringed by the state or any subdivision thereof. This governing body is a political subdivision of the state. As such, your oath applies. You solemnly swore an oath to support our state constitution, and we all know what has happened since, how that oath has been broken. Breaking an oath is a crime. On to plandemics. You must not be very well-read if you're not acquainted with the idea that pandemics are planned. Fauci openly announced in January of seventeen that a surprise infectious disease outbreak would occur during Trump's presidency. In October of nineteen, twenty nineteen, the John Hopkins Center for Health Security conducted a high-level pandemic simulation in New York City in partnership with the World Economic Forum and the Bill and Linda Gates Foundation. It was called Event Two-O-One, look it up. The circulated image of the COVID virus is nothing more than a computer-generated image, i.e. a cartoon. Contagious virus theory fell flat on its face during the worst pandemic in the history of the world, that is, prior to the COVID scam, and you know I'm referring to the Spanish flu. In nineteen nineteen, Milton Rosenau, M.D., Harvard Medical School Professor of Preventive Medicine, conducted actual science experiments in conjunction with doctors from the U.S. Navy and U.S. Health Service to determine the mode of spread of the alleged Spanish flu. They could not prove that it was contagious. Quoting one little short excerpt from that article in that, in JAMA, twenty nineteen nineteen, volume seventy-three, number five, "We proceeded to transfer the virus obtained from cases of the disease." That is, we collected the material and mucus secretions of the mouth and nose and throat and bronchi from cases of the disease and transferred this to our volunteers. None of them took sick. The experiments, again, were recounted in JAMA, volume seventy-three, number five. So where did all the death come from? It came from experimental pharmaceutical products, by and large. By the late nineteenth century, pharmaceutical cartel had established, through political activism, their monopoly on public health and health care, despite not knowing anything about health and health care. A headache is not caused by an aspirin or a Tylenol deficiency, and cancer is not caused by a toxic chemotherapy deficiency. We now live in a world where this cartel has control of mainstream media and most politicians. We now live in a world where the general public has been brainwashed by this cartel through the media and Hollywood to be scared of invisible, novel, deadly, contagious, nonexistent viruses. We live in a world where most people have been brainwashed into believing that the common respiratory, that common respiratory illness is caused by and large, or excuse me, is caused by an alleged virus. We live in a world with lots of power-hungry politicians. Power-hungry politicians are the history of the world. Under these conditions, it is very easy to perpetrate a plandemic. And I'm going to skip ahead, it goes like this. You create a scary story about a novel deadly contagion, you tell that story over and over, scare people as much as you can, use a bogus test to promote the story, lie over and over and over about the number of cases, censor all challenges to the official narrative, create the official propaganda, create new medical protocols that actually harm and kill patients, and scare people into getting tested and incentivize doctors to use harmful new protocols and prophylactics. In, I'm going to skip ahead, COVID was nothing more than election interference and depopulation. And you all bought into it when you took four hundred and four thousand dollars of partisan Zuckerberg money. Secret black box vote counting machines are also election interference. Election interference is a crime. You guys can do something about it. You should redeem yourselves. The elective franchise belongs to the people, not to a private vote counting company with opportunity and motive to cheat behind closed doors and with no accountability to we, the people. Thank you.
Sarah, could you please state your name?
I'm sorry?
Could you please state your name?
I'm sorry, Robert Boer, B-O-R-E-R.
Hi, my name is Connie Ranki. Thank you for listening to our comments. We are very concerned about these elections. And I want to remind you of what I brought in January about Lancaster County. Lancaster County was the only county that was off-trend out of the whole state of Nebraska. There are more Republicans here. Eighty thousand compared to Democrats, seventy-two thousand. Trump votes were seventy thousand, Biden votes were eighty-two thousand, eight point four percent more for Biden. That advantage compared to the registrations in Lancaster County shows that it was way off-trend. Then, if you go to the most recent Lancaster election, we have serious questions about that. Per some information, Todd Watson from the NEGOP put together, and also from the website for Lancaster County, Lancaster County had a record turnout. Forty-six percent. The turnout in the 2021 Lancaster election was only twenty-nine percent. So there was a significant increase in voter turnout, even though there were four thousand less registered voters. There was a complete set of conservative candidates for every position. This hasn't happened in over a decade. This year, local Republicans had over thirty-one percent more ballots turned in than we did in 2019. The Lancaster County Republican Party volunteers knocked on thirty thousand doors in the last week alone. On Election Day, Republican voter turnout from 2019 to 2023 grew by twenty-two percent more Republicans, and Democrat voting on Election Day fell by six percent. So if all these numbers are great, why did conservatives lose big in Lancaster County's last election? Republicans won only one city council position and two airport authority positions. Also, there are numbers that give, there are numbers that give serious pause for concern. The number of Democrat mail-in ballots increased by a hundred and seven percent in two years. The number of early votes for Democrats increased by a hundred and seven percent in one mayoral, mayor election cycle, 2019 to 2023. Statistically, this is quite the anomaly. We have serious questions about the election integrity in Lancaster County. Before 2005, registered voters filled out a form requesting absentee ballot. They gave a reason for their inability to be at the polls, and then a notary notarized those mail-in ballot requests. So that person was recognized, their photo ID was checked. After 2005, that's fifteen years later, or seventeen, eighteen now, the total number of absentee or early votes has increased dramatically. In 2020, in Lancaster County, we had eighty-six thousand mail-in ballots, and this mayoral race, excessive mail-in ballots. We are concerned about these things, and that's why the affidavits that I brought over a year ago were talking about, they were affidavits regarding mail-in ballots. The election machines, together with the mail-in ballots, are creating major problems in our elections, and something has to be done about that. We need accountability for our elections, and I know funding is coming up, so questions need to be asked. Thank you.
Amber Perker. Many of us had heard of the bankrupt Cryptic Currency Exchange Company called FTX. Sam Bankman-Fried, when I want to address the United States of America, gave money to Ukraine, Ukraine gave money in, to political elections. And what I want to address is, it was not just Democrats, it was also Republicans, some Republicans that were recipients in this money. This is a problem. And I'll share with you with all these other testimonies that are shared, and why you guys need to be on top of this. I believe this was the only county that received money, what I would refer to Zuckerbucks, that on the national level and national news across this nation, and not only in this nation, but in around the world, it was shared that Zuckerbuck money went in. In this county, I want to focus on the money that came in, that those, Flower Day, he was, he was one, that accepted this money. It's interesting, because you had even state senators like Carol Blood that was addressing in state, excuse me, most of that money had went to PPE. Not one penny went to PPE. Not one penny. We were told the reason that money was coming in was due to COVID, and it was a plandemic. And I'm going to further show you just a setup, going back to FTX. Again, for those listening at home, FTX, how's the United States of America and the government underneath the Biden-Obama leadership has happened in, on Republican and Democrat side? Money went to Ukraine, Speaker of the House McCarthy, very well an advocate in that. And I'm not against the people of Ukraine. What I'm against is corrupt government, whether in the United States of America or around the world. And there are people in Ukraine that have suffered, and they have been used as political pawns, and our own government has taken part in it. And our county, and the state of Nebraska, can stand up against it to truly be a voice, then, for the people who are suffering in Ukraine. Okay, going back, this article comes from Gateway Pundit. The now DEFUNCT cryptocurrency exchange FTX donated one million to the Senate Leadership Fund, a super PAC associated with Senate Minority Leader Mitch McConnell. For those of you who do not know, Mitch McConnell, he is a Republican. Now, I want to note that this was back in 2022, so I don't know if he's Majority Leader now, or whatever's going on, but point being, they received a million dollars. Again, the now DEFUNCT cryptocurrency exchange FTX donated one million to the Senate Leadership Fund, super PAC, associated with Senate Minority Leader Mitch McConnell. I'm going to now read an affidavit here for Lancaster County. My name is Ashley. Lincoln, Nebraska, and with Justin, we received four, maybe five ballots for the November third, 2020 election. We received two ballots with our names on them for each of us. Then a week to a week and a half later, we received two more, and then I think we received one more. We are both registered Republicans and have never requested any ballots. We opened the first ballots, we received, and then threw them away. When the second ones came and said official ballot, we thought it was a scam and threw those also. We have lived in this house since December 2019, and we rent from my mom. And last week, I read an affidavit from one who's registered as a Democrat. You guys were given homework. Have you reached out to the Election County Commissioner to urge them to give the source code as well as the cast vote record? Something's going on in this state, and you explained to me why we were told money was going to PPE, and that Zuckerbuck money, not one penny went to PPE, if we call personal protective equipment. This was a plandemic, and more to come on the Trump lose and what was set up through there. People in this government, our local government here, are okay with us, the voters, being in the dark, and that is not okay with us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Susan Kess. I've been here a few times. I served as a medical officer for the Center for Disease Control and Homeland Security regarding emergency preparedness for mass casualties as a result of weapons of mass destruction. So I'm well aware, and took part in actually the beta testing for the pandemics, training for our emergency preparedness personnel in, in America. My purpose here today really is just to sort of pull together everything that has been said, which is, we've come here and shared with you information about the election machines, we've shared with you about research projects that have been done to look at the outcomes of elections in America and in Nebraska, and specifically shared again today regarding Lancaster not being consistent with the makeup of Nebraska, of Lincoln's population. We've also shared with you, many of us have done door-to-door questioning of people after the elections to verify to us, is there really this kind of thing really going on? I'm not like the rest of them that say, we're waiting for you to get educated. We've shared with you links about how to go and look up many of the, these research projects for you, and actually shared on slides the kinds of research that have been done. And now it's time to hold you accountable. And so as a public servant for many years, I took a bond, I took an oath of office to defend the Constitution of the United States, and we have reviewed your bonds, and you have done the same thing. And in that bond, it states that you have to fulfill the duties of your position. That's where the subject hits the road, whether or not you've done your due diligence to go and research the information that we have shown you, and studied what we've brought to your, what brought to the table. And if you have failed to do that, you've been educated, you've been informed, you've signed an oath, and then all we have left is to hold you legally accountable. And that is exactly what we're going to be doing. We're not going away. This isn't going to just slide under the door. We will be holding you all accountable. And as the information keeps coming out, and we have more and more information and specific research about even the election machines, which Congress listened for hours and hours and hours, I don't know if you ever even saw a couple of minutes of it, but our U.S. Congress, the House and the Senate hearings showed that there is no way to secure our election system. It doesn't exist. I can lose a title to my home, I can lose my own personal identity, I personally have had checks stolen and written on credit cards opened in my name, et cetera. And so if I become disenfranchised by my ability, by the Constitution of the United States, to vote, and that gets overturned because somebody else has come in, either foreign or domestic, to turn over my vote, I've been disenfranchised, and that is illegal. And we will be holding you, we've informed you, we've come in here, we've been gracious to you, shared everything that we can with you, but now we're telling you, we will hold you accountable. Thank you for your time, and thank you for serving the state of Nebraska and doing the right thing.
Is there anyone else to speak?
George Ulmer. I was here last week, and I think I got up with no prepared message and ended up talking five minutes to you. I want to speak and dovetail off of a little bit. I want to speak and dovetail off of a little bit what has been said. I think what we're relating today is a lot of, we might call it, organic irregularities that are going on in the election. And that is valid harvesting, that's the rolls that are not cleaned up. My understanding is the election of 2020 was run off of the rolls of 2010. Right there, there's a mess to be had in relation to how accurate our voting and people is going to be. My bigger concern, and I'm going to look, because I'm kind of a wonk, I guess you'd call it, to listening to national things that are going on, and this is a train coming down the track. The biggest thing of all, we can talk about the organic things about here that we, including probably the legislative bill that was just passed. I don't know everything about that bill. My understanding is it is probably inadequate, it surely is inadequate to touch all the bases that are at risk here in our elections. But the thing that I'm talking about, that is big and encompassing of everything, and I think off of the organic things that are happening, and votes being turned in, absentee, harvested, and whatever, sets up the situation on the day of the election for shenanigans to be had. And that is, if the numbers are known, what's coming in, and these machines can be tapped, as we very well know, this has been even admitted to by ESNS machines. Everyone knows it, that we're at risk with these. We talk about suppression of voting out here. Suppression of voting can be cured. This, unless we get rid of the machines, is not curable for what's happening to us. We do not have a fair system any longer in America at that rate. We've had a disaster just happened in Arizona, where the different person is in the office down there, and talk about tardiness of us not holding people accountable. Here was the Secretary of State, who oversees election, running that election, and now she's the governor. Is something, can there be something wrong with that? And we know the machines were used in that case. They shut down for a good part of that day in Republican areas of that state down there, particularly in Maricopa County. Now, a whole bunch of votes were now put aside, they're unaccounted for as to true voting. True voting would have been had a Democrat and a Republican sitting there looking at those votes. Surveys of that election, or that day election, was dramatically in the other person's favor in that election. And this is the results we get with that.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we can proceed with the agenda.
Item six, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, June 8, 2023, due to lack of a quorum. The next regularly scheduled staff meeting will be held on Thursday, June 15, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, June 13, 2023, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster.nani.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L-N-K TV. L-N-K TV is also available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.nani.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L-N-K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire TV. And item seven is adjournment.
Move that we adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yogum?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
We will now begin the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023.
Location announcement with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material we discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster.nani.gov. Item one is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, May 16, 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yogum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yogum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Item three is the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Food Bank of Lincoln, Centerpoint Incorporated, Gentle Shepherd Baptist, Lincolnburyan Church, College View Academy, Good Neighbor Community, Second Baptist Church, Resources for Human Development, Christ United Methodist Church, Indian Hills Community Church, Mercy Meals of Lincoln, Christian Retirement Homes Doing Business as Eastmont Towers, MyBridge Radio, and the Clyde Malone Community Center.
Move approval? Oh, it's a public hearing.
We will now open the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on these motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Item four is the action item on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemptions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yogum?
Yes.
Motion carries, three zero. Item five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county board of equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Seeing none, we can proceed.
Item six is adjournment.
Move adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yogum?
Yes.
Three zero, we're adjourned.